I'd like to call the November 5th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first order of business is the invocation by our county manager, Mr. David Cotton. All yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who have gathered here this evening. Lord be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberation and grant them knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Guide them as they make decisions for the betterment of Onslow County and her citizens. Tonight, as we recognize the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, we ask that you bless them abundantly for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they made, and for their many contributions to our nation. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Now, I'd like to call Joshua Torres up to do our Fledge of Allegiance. He's a Life Scout with Troop 319, and he'll be leading us in the pledge tonight. Thank you, Joshua. Thanks for coming tonight. I'd like to recognize our elected officials tonight, which would be Sheriff Hans Miller. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight and making us safe. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, at the Commissioners' comment on the agenda. With no other items to be considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agendas in order.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion for adopting the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any member of the Commissioners who would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda for discussion at a separate time later at the end of the meeting?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are already at the public comment section. Mr. Cotton, is anyone signed up to speak on anything concerning our current agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is the first public comment period. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this meeting. The first person and only person who has signed up is Mr. Dan Calporthwaite. Does this mean it's very... Yes, sir. If you could approach the podium. It is in reference to Agenda Item 5B, which is a final offer for real property.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Dan Calporthwaite. I reside at 533 Moreland and Road, and I wanted to give you my side of the story for Item 5B as far as the Purchasing Director making a recommendation to reject my offer of $5,600 for the property on 114 Sherry Street. At the end of August, I submitted an upset bid on that particular property, and again, on September 7th, I submitted a bid for $5,600 for that property. The property was listed in the paper with a $5,600 upset bid amount, and due to the storm, the county offices were closed, so the upset bid period would have ended during the storm when the county offices were closed. And when I contacted Christina over at the property office, the surplus property office, she mentioned that all the bids were going to be reset. A bunch of properties were listed again. The Sherry Street property was once again listed with an upset bid amount starting at $5,600. The bid amount ended, the bid period ended on October 8th. On October 9th, I contacted the county to see if there was an upset bid on the Sherry Street property. I left a message to that effect. I also asked if there was an upset bid on the Parker Street property. I did not receive a returned phone call. I followed up later in the week, and that's when they suggested to me that there was a snap food, that somebody was, had been misinformed about them being the high bidder. But looking at the reality is that the upset bid of $5,600 was published twice in the paper. On September 11th, it was published, and then it was published again after the storm when the period started all over again. So I feel like my bid for $5,600 should be accepted.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 4, Presentations, Proclamation. You'll read the proclamation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Veterans Recognition Month 2018. Whereas on Veterans Day, America pauses to honor every service member who has ever worn one of our nation's uniforms. Each time our country has come under attack, they have risen in her defense. Each time our freedom has come under assault, they have responded with resolve. And whereas, as we pay tribute to our veterans, we are mindful that no ceremony or parade can fully repay the debt. We remember that our obligations endure long after the battle ends, and we make it our mission to give them the respect and care they have earned. And whereas, under the most demanding of circumstances and in the most dangerous corners of the earth, America's veterans have served with distinction. And whereas, on Veterans Day and every day, we celebrate their immeasurable contributions, draw inspiration from their example, and renew our commitment to showing them the fullest support of a grateful nation, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares November as Veterans Recognition Month in Onslow County and encourages all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans throughout appropriate public and private ceremonies and gestures presented the fifth day of November 2018. The Veterans Recognition Month, we would ask that Mr. Paul Levasquez, President of the Onslow Council of Veterans Organization, accept the proclamation, and the chairman has requested that Commissioner Paul Buchanan present on behalf of the Commissioners.
(Inaudible) all veterans. Everyone, this is just for one, this is for all of us, even myself, but it's an honor and a privilege for me to do this, and it's an honor and a privilege for all of you to be here. And I've been around some of you over the years, and Roland Thunder, all of you guys, I've known you over these years, and I really, it's an honor for me to do this, and it's a privilege. And Paul.
On behalf of the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, sincerely want to thank the Onslow County Board of Commissioners for this recognition. These organizations represented here is a small fraction of what we have in Onslow County. However, all of the veterans organizations here work very hard throughout the year in the main goal of getting together and doing things to help veterans in this community, and they do an outstanding job, and I'm really proud to accept this on their behalf. So, thank you very much.
Well, good on them.
Thank you, Paul. Would you, everybody that's in the audience that's a veteran, other than this way you can stand also, but would you stand up, please, all the veterans?
David, stand up.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what you did for our country, and thank you for making us safe. Your contributions will always be recognized. Thank you. All right, we move on now to five general items on surplus land offers. Let's see, Lori Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Item 5A, the county received two new offers from citizens to purchase some surplus property. The first parcel is 016-966-996. It's located at 335 Queens Road, and it's .71 of an acre in size, and the offer was in the amount of $6,400. And the second parcel is 026-219. It's located at 170 Pine Grove Baptist Church Road. It's 1.97 acres in size, and the initial offer was in the amount of $7,535.29, not the $5,100 that was reported to you in your agenda package. It is respectfully requested that the Board declare the properties as surplus and consider the initial offers, and if approved, authorize the purchasing agent to conduct the upset bid process. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As I say, a final offer on real property, and I think that's what the gentleman was speaking of that came up earlier.
Yes, sir.
If you could elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. Actually, incorrect information was provided to the high bidder. When we advertised it the first time, the deadline was during the hurricane, so we felt that we needed to republizize it since we were closed for that entire week, the offices. So we re-advertised it in the Daily News, and I think the deadline was October 8th for that deadline for upset bids. And after that morning on October 8th, the other bidder called around nine, it was around 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, and he did ask if he was still the high bidder, and unfortunately, staff told him that he was. And then after the closing at 12:00, when we were going through the paperwork, she realized that he was not the high bidder, and we didn't feel it was right to, we called him back and explained the situation, and he asked if he can come in and make an upset offer, but because it was after the 12:00 deadline, we felt that would have given him an unfair advantage, so we consulted with legal, and it seemed like the only thing proper to do and fair to everybody would be to bring the offer to you, request that it be rejected, so that we could re-advertize it and allow both parties the opportunity to make more upset bids.
Brett, on the legal side of that, where do we stand?
Yeah, you're able to accept or reject at any stage, so you can certainly reject. Here was a mistake by one of the employees. I certainly understand other gentlemen's perspective, but this other individual called. He inquired about making a bid, and our staff inadvertently told him that he didn't need to, that he was already the high bidder, when in fact he wasn't. So, it's up to you. You can certainly accept the bid, or you can reject it. If you reject it, it'll put the parties back into the bidding process, so the gentleman that spoke this evening won't be, he won't be forbidden to bid again. It would just get the bidding back between the two parties that seem to have interest in the property.
So the proper thing is for us to reject it so it can go back to bid?
That's correct.
I make a motion.
That was a recommendation.
Second. Let me ask you a question, though. I mean, I'm still a little confused on this. Who was the high bidder who was told he was the high bidder?
The high bidder is, would you like his name?
Is it him?
No.
Okay. So, let me make sure I understand this right.
Oh, wait a minute, yes, I'm sorry. He is the high bidder.
So he was told he was the high bidder, and he got the...
The other guy was told he was the high bidder, and then we realized that Mr. Calporthwaite was the high bidder.
So we made a mistake?
Yes. Staff made an error.
So we're correcting it now by rejecting it and then starting back over?
Correct. And that way, because it had closed, the gentleman had called that morning, and he wanted to see if he was the high bidder still. We told him he was, so he was like, okay, I don't need to come in, because he was going to come back in if he wasn't by the 12:00 deadline to submit another offer. But then when the deadline closed, we realized, oh, no, he was not the high bidder.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to understand this, that he was the one that was awarded the high bid, so he did his due diligence, correct?
Yes.
He did everything proper?
Yes.
I, I just, if we make a mistake, we should own it, and that's just my opinion. I'm not blaming anybody, but if we make a mistake, we should own it, because I think the man, the gentleman, did his due diligence on this one. In my, that's just my personal opinion. He did everything right. He was the high bidder, and then I think now that if we go back and rebid, in my opinion, it's going to be unfair, because he did everything that he did in the right way. So that's just my opinion.
I think, I think maybe we're all confused a little bit here, I think.
Yeah, and maybe I didn't explain it well. So, this gentleman here that came tonight to speak, he submitted the high bid.
Okay.
There was somebody else interested in the property. That person called staff, and the staff said to the person who called in that he was in fact the high bidder, don't worry about coming in and putting in an upset bid. So because of that, and I certainly understand your perspective, this gentleman did everything correctly. The other, the other person who was interested in the party property wanted to bid again, but was told he did not have to because he was, he was the high bidder when he in fact wasn't. So the idea here is you can certainly accept this gentleman's bid, but from a legal perspective, you're able to, I mean, either way, you can accept or reject. Staff's recommendation was to reject this bid so that the person who relied upon the county's representations is not harmed by the county's representations too.
So in effect, the person that called in would not be getting a fair shot?
That's correct.
Okay.
That, that, that's the idea, and I can certainly see it on both sides here, but that's, that's the issue we're presented with tonight.
So we have a motion and a second.
A motion and a second to go back to the bid process.
Correct.
And then whoever the high bid is, that'll be the final offer.
Somebody's not going to be happy with the decision we make, either. One or the other's not going to be happy with what we do today.
Yeah, well, regardless of that fact that, you know, I just, it is confusing, and I understand, we made a mistake, but I'm inclined to believe that this gentleman did the right thing.
So did the other one.
So did the other one.
Yeah, the other guy did too, so.
Yeah.
That's amazing, too.
Well, it's my opinion, and I think this guy did the right thing by doing the paperwork and getting everything submitted and...
If the other person was here and they were saying the same thing, we'd, we'd have to say the fair way to do it was let them bid it out.
Right. Sir, let me ask you a question. Can I? Are you willing to bid again?
I have a hard time here.
Are you willing to bid again? Are you willing to bid again when the bid goes back out?
(Inaudible). Yeah, I'm going to bid again, but I still feel like the amount was published twice, so that individual should have understood that he didn't have the high bid. He knew how much he bid last time, so on the 11th, it was published, and it was published again with a starting bid, when they reset it after the storm. So I understand, he might have been told he wasn't a high bidder, but it was already communicated twice in the paper that $5,600 was the top, was the last bid. That's where I feel like I followed the process.
Okay, understood. I appreciate it.
And I was told that there was no communication about the amount. He was told that he wasn't a high bidder, but yet that amount was already established. That's my feeling.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have four to one to rebid it. Okay, are we going on to Item C, Final Offer on Real Property? Yours again.
Yes, sir. The Board accepted the filing properties, offers on the filing properties. Parcel 012639, which is located at 110 Denise Drive, .28 of an acre. The initial offer and the final offer were both $5,600. Parcel 152316, located at 302 De Anza Court, it's .57 of an acre, and the initial and final offer were both $3,000. Parcel 044385, located at 1149 Parker Road, .1, .71 of an acre. The initial and final offer was $2,800. Parcel 027894, located on Henderson Road, is two acres in size, and the initial and final offer were $5,000. 036063 on Pintown Road is .12 of an acre, and the initial and final offer is $420. And Parcel 061966 on Five Mile Road, it's .52 of an acre, and the initial offer was $1,406.75, and the final offer is $1,701. And public notices were advertised on the Daily News, and the county has not received any upset offers within the last 10-day period of the last notice. Therefore, the final offers are being brought back to you for final consideration.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As I say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Section D, amended audit contract. Mr. Dave McColl, Air Finance Director.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The item you have before you is the 2018 amended audit contract. The reason why we're amending the contract is twofold. First, Elliot Davis, our auditors for this fiscal year, identified that the county is subject to compliance requirements of the passenger facility charge program. That is revenues that flow through to the airport, and that is one of the reasons. And the other is the county also expended significant grant funds under the Airport Improvement Program, resulting in additional major federal awards as defined under the Single Audit Act. With that said, these programs will require Elliot Davis to perform another 60 hours of additional testing as it pertains to our audit. The additional test work will account for around $8,200, and that's why we are amending the, we're requesting that we amend the contract. This will increase the contract to a total amount of $58,200. And with that said, I respectfully request that you consider approval of the amended contract with Elliot Davis for the fiscal year 2018 audit, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county. And with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Got a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. McColl? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McColl. Air Traffic Control Tower Operating Agreement, Section E. Mr. Chris White, Airport Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Before you, this evening, we have the Air Traffic Control Tower Operating Agreement. On February 21st, 2011, the county entered into a contract air traffic control tower operating agreement with the FAA that started the process of building the air traffic control tower at the Albert J. Ellis Airport. The construction of the tower is now complete. The new updated agreement outlines the responsibilities of both parties for the operation of the tower. The agreement, in the agreement, the FAA funds all staffing costs, and the county is responsible for maintaining the facility and some of the equipment. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And November 13th is a dedication.
That's correct.
At 10:00 in the morning.
That's correct.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for reminding me. Forgot.
Hope everybody can be there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Section F, Proposed Settlement Agreement. I think Mr. Brett DeSelm says that.
Yes, sir. Cape Fear Precast LLC and the county entered into an incentive development agreement in January of 2007. A dispute arose between the parties as to whether Precast had fulfilled its reporting obligations under that agreement. We conducted a pre-suit mediation, and shortly thereafter, Precast agreed to pay the county $140,000 to resolve the dispute. There's an enclosed, in the agenda package, a settlement agreement. It's respectfully requested that the Board consider whether it should enter into the proposed settlement agreement and release with Precast. If it's the Board's pleasure to approve the settlement agreement, it's requested that the Board authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve the settlement.
Second.
There was, before, any discussion? There was no money out of the pocket of the county on this. It was just an agreement that they had to pay so much for a certain period of time. So that money, if we vote to approve that tonight, that money goes back into the Economic Development Fund for future expansion of the park and so forth.
That's correct. It was a, the county deeded land to Precast, and one of their obligations was to report jobs, wages, et cetera, and that's where the dispute arose. So the county was, of course, out, the land was conveyed, but it was not out any capital as far as funds.
The fact that the Cape Fear Precast filled out the information the first year showed that there was an understanding of the contractual obligations, so that would have reduced it to $315,000, and we would be accepting less than half of that. Through no fault of our own, it was incumbent upon them to fill out this information, correct?
That's correct. It was required that they submit the information every year by May 15th.
So I have a problem with accepting less than half, because it creates the perception that somehow the county is in the wrong, you know, to accept less than half on a settlement, in my mind.
Well, we discussed this before, and I tend to agree with Commissioner Price, because I think they're getting the easy way out. And I know we had discussed maybe a sum of $175,000 to $200,000, or something like that, for them to settle, but $140,000 is kind of low, as far as I'm concerned, because I think they're getting out, they're getting off easy. And I agree, the perception is created that, you know, hey, you know, that we'll give in as far as the county's concerned. They owe us that money. I mean, they're getting, they're getting a break as it is to settle out of court. And, I'm sorry. I just, along with Commissioner Price, I too have a problem with $140,000. I think it's, I think it's way less. It's more than half of what they owe us.
Is it correct that had they reported every year as required, then we would get zero money from them? So basically, they're, it's costing them $140,000 that they would not have had to spend otherwise.
That's correct. If they would have reported every year on it before May 15th, they wouldn't have had to pay the county any money. Every year, the amount due would have been reduced. Commissioner Price is, to his point, they did for one year, and then they didn't for the remaining nine years. And that's where the dispute arose, and the county found out, learned of this, this issue after they asked for the deed of trust to be canceled, and Mr. Cotton, of course, did his due diligence, and that's what brought this before the parties. They hired an attorney out of Wilmington, Steve Coggins. Of course, I represented the county, and this was the most money that they were willing to pay voluntarily. What I mean by voluntarily is without having to go to court and having a judge or a jury to sign.
What would it cost if we'd have had, went to court? Even if we'd have won, how would it, legal fees?
Yeah, as far as legal fees, you know, I would estimate somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 in legal fees on the county's behalf. Now, if we prevailed, that could be assessed to them, and the legal fees could be assessed to them. Vice versa, if we did not prevail, they'd have an argument for legal fees against us. So it certainly, it's a risk any time you go to a court as to what the court will ultimately do.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three to two. Thank you, gentlemen. Opioid mitigation grant, Ms. Angela Lee.
Good evening.
Help Director.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. The Injury and Violence Prevention Section of the Department of Health offered health departments in their communities. departments in their communities the opportunity to compete for funding to address current opioid crisis in their respective counties. Following the request of the county manager to seek additional grant funding for our community, the health department applied for and received, was awarded $95,700 in grant funding with no required county match. The funds will be utilized to enhance the services of our quick response team as well as mitigate opioid use in our community. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the opioid crisis mitigation funding in the amount of $95,700.
Motion and two seconds. Any discussion?
I just want to say, this is another example of us trying to find money to get our detox center up and running with the health, with the mental health crisis, to get involved in the opioid abuse system. I think it's wonderful that you guys did this. I mean, I'm amazed every day, I don't know what you do, Sherry, over there with your staff, but somehow you pull out these miracles, you find these grants, you work with the Sheriff's Department, you get this funding, it's free. This whole detox center and whatever is not even, hardly costs us any money whatsoever in terms of our budget's concerns. So I applaud your efforts. I think it's fantastic and I can't wait for this thing to be open. And I know it's soon, right, Sherry?
January, I think is what I said in favor.
I think we're looking at January. I think the construction is almost complete within our new facility to meet the standards. So that's a big deal, folks. That's a big deal. Two and a half years working on this, or two years that we've been working on this and we're going to have one here in Onslow County. So I thank you, Sherry, thank you, Angela, for all the hard work. Much appreciated.
And Angela, there's a couple of other pieces going on here and Sherry probably is aware of it. There's more grants for education and training of our officers. We're running school right now with this metal, medical, medical first, medical health first aid, which is part of the CIT training. And we've already run 80 officers through, that's the Sheriff's Department, Police Department throughout Onslow County. And it's a big push to help with all this that's going on with our center.
Yeah, absolutely. And the fact that we're working together with the Sheriff's Department, working with the PD and everybody else, in a joint effort, I mean, it's a community effort. It's something that we badly need and I'm really proud of it, very proud, proud of what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Angela.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Write-offs, help department. I think that's yours also, Ms. Angela Lee.
Each year, the Onslow County Health Department is required to request approval to write off outstanding amounts owed by the patients. For the fiscal year 2018, the amount totaling $4,453.23 has remained outstanding for over two years. Our department does all that it can, uses all efforts to collect outstanding debts, to include using the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program. We have collected $16,717.19 through the North Carolina Debt Setoff Clearinghouse. The proposed write-off amount is equal to .14% of our $3,156,675.61 in total fiscal year 2018 accounts receivables. The write-off amounts are reflective of balances remaining after our sliding fee scale was applied. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the health department write-off request in the amount of $4,453.23.
Motion to approve the write-offs.
A second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, is there, is there anything else that the state legislature could do to give, grant you greater flexibility to do an even better job of collecting these?
Well, we have specific guidelines that we use that are in our contract addendums with the state. So we bill our patients a specific amount of times. We, of course, ask them to pay when they come in. They're, you know, we follow all of our guidelines. When, we can't send them to North Carolina Debt Setoff for any balances under $50. So we try to collect everything that we can.
I would just applaud you for collecting 99.86% of your accounts receivable. If I could do that in my business, I'd be happy.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
Item six was a consent agenda and we didn't have anything that was moved from the front to the consent agenda at the back. So now we're at seven, which would be public comment. Citizens can address the board for up to five minutes per speaker on any issue which the Board of Commissioners has control of. So who all got signed up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you stated, this is the second public comment period. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioner shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. The first speaker is Ms. Louisa Ringo, 503 Sebastian Drive, Swansboro.
My name is Louisa Barbie Morton Ringo. My family's residence in Onslow County goes back to a period immediately after the American Civil War. We are natives of this county. For several generations, we farmed tobacco and corn and were small community merchants. Economic changes, it made it clear to us that small farming was a thing of the past and this background drove my family's passion for education, the desire to acquire a profession for each and every one of us that would soften the blows of economic change. With college educations, my aunt, my three aunts, my mother and myself totaled 120 years of service to the Onslow County School System. And so it was, after watching your special called meetings, that I saw how you made school leaders facing a catastrophe that we have not seen since Hurricane Hazel in 1954 grovel for $5 million as this board sat upon a $72 million reserve fund. I believe that when we elect you to be public servants, we expect a balance of knowledge and common sense. First, it was apparent to me that your intention was to punish and discredit the superintendent, his staff, and the Board of Education for not following the standard bidding process. What the public needs to know, and that's why I'm here, is the superintendent and his staff had already done their homework in preparation for the aftermath of the hurricane. State law, gentlemen, allows school systems to waive the traditional process of getting bids in emergency situations. The contractor chosen to begin repairing and cleaning up the extensive damage in our school unheard of since 1954 already had a GSA contract with FEMA. It would be next November before schools would be open if the bidding process had been required. I also would like to comment upon the county manager's open mic comment about the $72 million that is in this county's reserve. In my mind, this is taxpayers' money that most of us struggle to pay and we wish you to use it in just such times as this. I would also like to counter some of the arguments that the board made. One of them was, from one of the commissioners, was that each school should have an accounting, an estimated amount of what it was going to cost to fix each and every one of these schools. I am wondering that if the police department, the sheriff's department, who was doing massive drug busts, would be required to give an itemized accounting of what it was going to cost before they ever carried out their public safety duties. I know that in the case of the unexpected threat to public safety, police don't, are not required to give itemized accounting before they have to protect citizens. Common sense in being informed is a necessary ingredient when public servants are making decisions for other folks. I also would like to comment on the leadership of the chair in this particular case, and that is that the board should have been led to live up to its duties as prescribed by North Carolina GS 115C-408. North Carolina state law provides the statutory framework for public school funding, more specifically that the facility requirements for the public education school system will be met, gentlemen, by county government. We had to have citizens served in which the board should have been willing to take the risk and trust that the North Carolina General Assembly at the time this board was deliberating and the government in a bipartisan effort was working to assist the counties. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Ben Bass, 908 North Durham Avenue, Creedmoor.
Good evening.
Evening.
Ben Bass, 908 North Durham Avenue, Creedmoor. I'm one of the owners of Builder Services out of Creedmoor. With only a few minutes to speak, I'm unable to say everything I'd like to say about the damaging accusations that have been brought up over the last several weeks about my company. So I prepared a written letter with attachments for the Commissioners, county attorney, county manager, Board of Clerk, in order to address them, which I've given to Morgan tonight. So instead of using my time to tell you what's in the letter, I'd like to take the remainder of the time to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up on a farm in Nash County, spent most of my childhood working in the fields, priming tobacco, raising hogs. In the late 80s, my father got transferred to Sampson County where I graduated from Clinton High School in the early 90s. After graduating, I moved to Raleigh and started my career at Circuit City. After spending almost 15 years in the corporate world, I decided to leave and join my brother in the construction and restoration world. Over the past 11 years in this industry, there's many things that I'm extremely proud of. And first is all the associates of Builder Services. I have the honor to work with them every single day. The second is the sheer amount of great people I've met working across the state of North Carolina. And lastly, some of the great organizations I've had the pleasure of working with, like the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, and some of the largest insurance companies in the United States. See, my father is a retired North Carolina Highway Patrolman. And growing up with a state trooper in the house wasn't easy, to say the least. But there's values that he instilled in me and the key one is your name. He always told us, you're only as good as your name, so do what you say you're going to do. I started emergency mitigation services on Onslow County schools on September 18th, 2018. From this date, my focus has been to provide services needed to return teachers and students back to school. See, I'm a father of a 13-year-old and a nine-year-old. And I understand how important school is. I live two and a half hours from here. I've seen my kids four hours in seven weeks. So despite what's been said and implied about my company, I'm still upholding the values that were instilled in me by my father. I'm only as good as my name and I believe I've done what I said I was going to do effectively, efficiently, and ethically. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else signed up?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to manager's comment. Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner's comment. We'll change things around a little bit. Vice Chair.
Why are you doing that to me? Hey, okay, real quick. I can't remember your name, the lady that was out here, previous to you, sir, that was showing up. But let me, let me just say this. I had no intention of saying anything, but since it was brought up, I'll discuss it just a little bit. Back in December of 2016, I took an oath. I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of North Carolina. Okay? I'm a veteran. I get your feelings. I get the fact that there's sacrifices. I get all that. But when I took an oath in December of 2016, I promised everybody out there in G10 world, everybody that's sitting in here, to protect them, to be financially responsible, and to ask the questions. I asked the questions. And you can, you know, you can shake your head all day long, but I asked, I listened to you patiently, sir. I asked the questions. Okay? The Commissioner asked the question, Price. Every Commissioner asked a question because I am fiscally responsible to every taxpayer in this county. I care about kids, too. All my kids went through the North Carolina system. I get it. I support the educators. I support the school system. But when I ask questions, it's not because we're trying to imply, we're asking what is going on here. We want to know. We want to see the receipts. We want to see the evidence. How much is it going to cost us? Because eventually, it's not the Board of Education that has to answer to that. It's me and him and the other three Commissioners and the new other two Commissioners that are coming. Now, I'm not trying to be antagonistic whatsoever. I'm not trying to put a barrier there. But one, I'm not going to stand here and let you go after my chairman for no reason when he asked simple questions. Any question that a person of competence and that was responsible for a budget would ask of anybody, period. So there is no apology for that. I will continue to ask the questions of the sheriff and he knows I have, and other departments. If I feel there's something wrong or something's, you know, I don't understand something, I will never, ever apologize for asking the hard questions. Because in December of 2016, the voters voted for me to do exactly what I just did. And I'm not changing who I am for anybody. So am I a little upset about it? No, not really. I'm trying to explain where we're coming from because I trust this county manager over here to do what he needs to do. I trust our attorney to do what he needs to do. That's why they were hired. I go to them for the hard questions. They do the research, they give me the answers. Sometimes the answers aren't good enough because we don't have the complete information. We don't have everything available to us. But, you know, when I hear people saying that we need to apologize, it's not happening, not for me. I'm not going to apologize for what I felt I was doing was right for the county citizens. I don't want people to spend extra money. Granted, the children are number one concern, at least they are with me. But I hear comments about take a risk, take chances. We don't do that in county government, not from a fiscal responsibility. Am I correct, David? I'm not taking a risk. I'm not going to take a risk when I don't have facts in front of me telling me exactly what this money's being sent for. I heard one figure here, then I heard another figure here, I heard another figure here, heard another figure. So I don't know what to believe, to be honest with you, sir. But I'm going to continue to ask those questions. I'm going to continue to ask them. Maybe it's the old cop in me after 27 years as a cop. But you know what? That's who I am. It bothers me that people don't understand that. It bothers me that people out there in G10 and out in the public think that we have, they have this perception that we, as VOC, do not care about the Board of Education or our children, and that is garbage and nonsense. Just like you, I have, I've lost sleep, too. I have. We have to sit here and make hard decisions. I'm on the phone with that man, that man, this man, and this one here, talking about these issues. I call Sharon, I call David, trying to find a solution. So when people say we don't care, that's a lie. But I will tell you this, I'm going to stand my ground and I'm going to ask the questions. I'm going to continue to ask the questions. I'm going to continue to do what I feel is right for the citizens of Onslow County, the taxpayer. There are things that we're trying to look at, like maybe possibly put a sunrise, or excuse me, sunset tax on sales tax that we've already approached legislatures for to raise money for the schools. Okay? We haven't heard back, but a lot of the representatives are agreeable to it, so we'll see how that goes. But there are other alternatives for us. And, you know, I'm sorry that you have a difference of opinion for that aspect, for that particular part. For that aspect, for that particular portion, I apologize that you have a difference of opinion. But I can't, I can't back down from doing what I feel is right for the taxpayers of this county. I for one am a taxpayer like everyone else in here, and I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna take my oath seriously to protect and serve the citizens of Onslow County, period. So, I mean, I appreciate you coming down, and hopefully we'll get this resolved, and hopefully we'll continue to move on and work forward to the BOE. But it bothers me that the BOE and us, we got along. We do get along tremendously. We initiated contact with them to have a meeting two years ago to work together. No one could have anticipated the catastrophic event of Hurricane Florence. We understand that. But even despite all those things out there, we have an obligation as commissioners to protect the taxpayers of this county, which include our children, our teachers, our facilities, everything within this county. And if you disagree with me, that's fine. You're more than happy to disagree with me. I'll still like you at the end, but, you know, you can agree to disagree, but that's the way it is, and that's how I feel about it. I don't, I'm not sure I can speak for the rest of the commissioners, but all I can say is that we're gonna continue to do what we feel is best for the county, and I thank you for speaking up. Ma'am, I thank the other individual that was here speaking her piece, and I'm glad everybody's out here tonight, and I hope you guys get home safely. Thank you.
Commissioner Buchanan?
I just want to thank the veterans for being here tonight. We make tough decisions, and a lot of these decisions are not the easiest thing for us to do. We do care. We care for our children. Those that know me know that our children come first. Children are our future, always will be. And the teachers, we do a lot for the teachers of Onslow County. I think they forget that the ten percent supplement they get comes out of taxpayers' money that comes from Onslow County, from these five commissioners. We give ten percent to the teachers. We look out for our teachers, we look out for our students, we're trying to look out for our schools, but when we look at these numbers, it concerns us, and we have a right to ask questions. And if you're telling me I can't ask questions of somebody that's spending money that belongs to the taxpayers, then you're totally wrong, because I'm gonna do what's right for the people of Onslow County. Everybody have a nice evening and safe trip home. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
I had the privilege of attending the Steering Committee on Public Education last week to establish goals to send to our, first to our Legislative Goals Committee, then on to the Legislative Goals Conference, and then on to the state legislature concerning education. These five goals are what we came up with. Seek legislation to establish a new state-county partnership to address statewide public school capital challenges, including but not limited to maintenance or renovation, construction, and debt through a dedicated, stable funding stream that is consistent from county to county and sufficient to meet the school facility needs of all hundred counties. Second goal, seek legislation to establish a statewide bond for school capital. The last time we had a statewide bond was 1996, I believe, in twenty-two years. The treasurer has asserted, the treasurer of North Carolina has asserted that North Carolina is financially stable enough to put forth a bond, and so that's one of our goals, to establish a statewide bond for school construction, school capital. Third goal, adequately and fully fund public school current operating expenses to minimize the burden on the counties. The state ideally, constitutionally, is obligated to do the operational expenses. The counties are required to do the capital side, the construction of new schools. So that's another goal that we set forth there, to adequately fund the operational expenses. Fourth goal, reexamine the need for changes to the K-three classroom size reduction mandates, including capital needs, maintenance, operation, and teacher availability and pay. This was the reduction in class size in K through three. I've never heard anything of it being based on research, any research to reinforce that. It's just arbitrarily, the state legislature decided to be, hey, it's always good to reduce class size, is what they seem to be implying. And so we're gonna reduce it to seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, somewhere along in there. It's the K-three class size reduction. That has tremendous ramifications across the state of North Carolina, okay? For one thing, we're not graduating enough teachers to employ just the teachers in Meck and Wake Counties, in Mecklenburg and Wake Counties. We're not graduating enough teachers. Yeah, so you reduce the class size in K-three, that's gonna require more teachers. So I'd like to see the state reexamine that, not to mention the fact that we build for a certain understanding of what our class size is, and now a school which was designed for nine-hundred-and-twenty may only be able to take in, say, eight-seventy-five or something like that. So, you know, it has a ripple effect across the whole system of creating problems. So we want the state legislature to take another look at that. The fifth goal, support legislation providing flexibility to align K-12 and community college calendars. So those five goals, along with, there was three more, so I don't want to take too much of your time, because I have a few things to say, you know, other than that. I got a little skin in the game as well, on this education thing. I know Ms. Ringo. Thank you, Ms. Ringo, for your years of service, White Oak. And I have a little bit of skin in the game as well, you know, for being an educator. And I have a connection to Onslow County schools that's never gonna change. However, I have a connection to my two kids as well, but I know that my two kids can be knuckleheads, you know, at times. They weren't very often, but they could be. And so whenever they were knuckleheads, I called them out on it. You know, you don't believe it, ask them. And so, you know, anytime, nobody's right a hundred percent of the time being my point. You can miss the boat on some things. It may not be intentional, but you can miss the boat. Recently, the chair of the Board of Education questioned whether the Board of Commissioners owed the Board of Education an apology. This question came about as a result of a letter from Chairman Bright, which expressed Board of Commissioner concerns about the bids given for, given by the contractor doing the restoration work for Onslow County schools. I'll read you a little quote right here from John Adams. You know John Adams, patriot in American Revolution. He was part of the legal defense team for the British soldiers accused of the Boston massacre. And I gotta think, John Adams wanted these guys to be convicted, but he's a defense attorney, so he's gotta do his best for them. And so Adams makes a statement there, he's a brilliant guy, I always like to quote guys that are smarter than I am. And so John Adams is a brilliant guy. He's speaking in terms of the defense of these British soldiers. He says, "The facts are stubborn things, and whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of the facts." So I might want things to be a certain way, but they may not necessarily be that way. And so John Adams understood that, and so I think that's very appropriate for what we face here. "The bid builder services provided for Somerset Courthouse to the county of Onslow was six-hundred-and-eighty-five percent over the lowest responsible bidder's quote." Six-hundred-and-eighty-five percent. That gets my attention. Things start going off in my mind whenever I see six-hundred-and-eighty-five percent, ladies and gentlemen. It's my responsibility as a commissioner to protect the taxpayer. That's, at least that's how I see it, and if people don't agree with me, they'll probably have an opportunity to voice that at some time or another. So, six-hundred-and-eighty-five percent over the lowest responsible bidder's quote. "The bid builder services provided on Albert Ellis Airport Terminal was nine-hundred-and-eleven percent over the lowest responsible bidder's quote." Nine-one-one. That's an emergency. That gets your attention right there. If I don't pay attention to these figures, I ought to start using my head for something other than a hat rack, okay? Is what my parents always told me. They said, "Boy, use your head for something other than a hat rack." Well, that's what I'm doing right here, because that gets my attention. I feel as if it would have been irresponsible of this board if we didn't inform the Board of Education of these facts, because they're stubborn things. "No apology should be necessary for doing our jobs of trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money." That's not something I will ever apologize for. I would think most taxpayers wouldn't want me to apologize for that, but if you do, I'm not going to. And, you know, because it don't make sense. Perhaps an apology is due, but not from this board. There can be multiple apologies that perhaps are due. I've heard for over thirty years of my life, the past thirty years, from FEMA, from local government, to state government, to other organizations, that you should never choose someone to do repairs after a storm that shows up at your door. They've got commercials on this for over thirty years. Joe Public, "Don't choose someone to do your repairs if they show up at your door. You get multiple bids." So then, it seems that's exactly what Onslow County schools did. How can this be a best practice? How can this be a best practice if that's what we did? I just ask myself that question. You say, "Well, the situation Onslow County schools faced was an emergency." I agree with that. I agree with that statement. It very much so was an emergency. But the situation we faced at the airport was an emergency. The situation we faced with our courthouse was an emergency to me. If there's water running in the courthouse and they can't hold court in there, that feels like an emergency to me. So, but yet we got bids for it. Congratulations. We were able to do that. That's what our due diligence required of us, to protect the taxpayers' money. That's our job. There's multiple things I could address here, but I don't want to dominate the whole time. I just got a couple more things to say, Mr. Chairman. On the issue of the request of the return for the thirteen million dollars, okay? The chair has requested that the Board of Commissioners return the thirteen million dollars that was turned over by the Board of Education to the county, okay, as a way of building up the capital fund for school construction. Every school board member should understand what that thirteen million dollars is for. It is for a capital fund to build up so that we can finance future school construction. If this board were to ever return that money back to the Board of Education, be careful what you ask for, because this commissioner would never vote to support any other increase in revenue if that's the case. And I could go on and talk about other potential apologies that perhaps we should be given about flat roofs across the county. I don't want to get into that. That's a lengthy discussion. Sun roofs on gyms, you know, that blew off when the wind kicked up. The fact that Southwest High School leaked when I got there in 1988. It leaked when I left in 2016. Maybe an apology is due from whoever was responsible for that patch. I don't know. I won't get into that. Also, we were told that the repairs for Onslow County schools would cost thirty million dollars. Okay, thirty million dollars. That's what I was told. That was one week. That was on Friday, I heard that. When I came back on Monday, I received a report that the estimate of repairs was one-hundred-and-twenty-five-point-five million dollars. Had to go back through and check the internet, see if I'd slept through a hurricane again, or multiple hurricanes. That the estimate was thirty million dollars. How does it go up to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-point-five million? Okay? Someone didn't do a very good job on their estimates. Perhaps an apology is in order, but that's not for me to dictate. That was, that's for someone else. So, Mr. Chairman, I have you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what else I can say, but I do appreciate the speakers that came tonight. It does bother me to hear the misinformation that keeps getting promulgated out there. If we had a seventy-two million dollar unrestricted fund balance, then I don't have any doubt that this board would have been able to approve more emergency money for the school system. We're the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and I think every one of us here is doing our very best to look out for the taxpayers of Onslow County. I'm regularly in touch with school board members and with our legislative delegation. I would, I would love to be in the position of the school board where you can go out and spend money and not have to earn it. Just spend the taxpayer money and not be accountable for raising the money from your property taxes that it takes to, for us to support the schools. I appreciate what the school board does, and I want them to continue and to do their due diligence and make sure that that taxpayer money is spent in the most efficient and very best way possible. And as already been said, we're all very interested in maintaining our schools and doing the best we can for our schoolchildren in Onslow County. Thank you, veterans, for being here tonight. We appreciate your service, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I'll say a couple things. Thank you, Mr. Bass, for coming tonight and telling us about your background and so forth. I think I know where you got those numbers from, and the letter that I mailed to the school board was not any ill will at all to you or your company or the school board. There was no, nothing intended in that to point fingers at anyone. The county attorney, Mr. Cotton, had mailed, did an email to the school superintendent with that same information, and it on the twelfth, the same, basically the same information. But when you're dealing with FEMA, you have to make sure your Ts are crossed and your Is are dotted in order to get reimbursement. And that's all we were trying to do, is make sure that the bid process was like it's supposed to be. And I think the school board now has actually gone, gonna go out on bids for the, for the remainder of the school for replacing the damage.
We were never doing repairs.
Your time's up. I appreciate you. But anyway, Mr. DeSimms, you described the content of the letter and what the letter was intended for.
Yes, sir.
Because I had, the county attorney, the county manager, and county staff wanted me to make sure that our school board chairman knew what they had sent earlier on the twelfth, so they could check their checks and balances to make sure everything was in line, so the school would get the proper reimbursement from the state and from the FEMA, because if you don't do that, there's a possibility they deny the claim, and then guess who holds the bag? These guys up here with me. And as far as the lady that spoke earlier about the seventy-two million dollars, if we had seventy-two million dollars of unassigned money in the fund balance, do you think that this board would have voted in June to raise taxes, three cent, to support the schools? I've never voted for a taxing, my twelve years as a commissioner, I've never voted for a property tax increase in my entire life. And I would have never voted for a property tax increase to tax our people for the schools if we had seventy-two million dollars of unassigned fund balance. And Mr. Cotton did a very good job, because Ms. Thomas, Chairman Thomas, had wrote him an email asking him to explain the seventy-two million dollars of fund balance, and all of that money is assigned. It's not money that we just have. It's money that has to be spent, that's already been allocated to other programs. It's here, but we can't use it for, for anything we want to. It has to be used for what it's assigned to and what we budgeted for. So with that being said, I think there's probably been a lot of misunderstanding about the process, and I hope that this board and the Board of Education, and I've already had conversations with the chairman of that board, we're probably gonna meet on sometime in January to discuss a funding mechanism. But about the thirteen million dollars, the thirteen million dollars was used to build the schools with. That was used for debt service. It was there, it's assigned to pay the bills on the school. We built Dixon Middle School, we built Richlands Elementary, and that money is being used to pay the debt on those schools. And that money is being used to pay the debt on those schools. That money just don't show up and grow on trees, and we don't have a printing press for it. We have to tax our citizens for it. And the funding formula, even though back in August, I think, this board chose to abandon the current funding formula, we all unanimously voted in February, March, and June to honor the funding formula. And that funding formula that was in place, is still in place until June of next year. It's still there. So the $13 million is still in that particular funding formula that we had to honor until June. That's why we were gonna meet September 27th and work out a new funding mechanism. But of course, a little old lady by the name of Florence come along and took that away from us, so we had to cancel that meeting. So that meeting now is scheduled for January, and the reason for that is we've got two new commissioners coming on in December, and we'll have three potentially new school board members after tomorrow. So the chairman of the school board and myself decided that maybe January would be the best time sometime to meet, hammer out the new funding mechanism. I hope we have cleared that up. Mr. Bass, there was nothing, no ill will intentionally pointed. It was just like the vice chair said. It was just questions that we needed to ask. He made some, he made some email that was maybe taken or misinterpreted the wrong way, but I just interpreted it as protecting the citizens' money. So that's what we're supposed to do, and that's what we're hired to do. And all the funding comes from us, the school system. They don't have any funding mechanism. They don't have a way to get revenue. It has to come from us, the state or the federal government. And being guards of the purse strings, somebody made a comment the other day, said, "You know, you have to follow the golden rule." And the golden rule is, we got the goal, and we make the rules. So I'll leave that being said, and I thank y'all for coming tonight. I thank all of the speakers, and I hope the gentleman that wants to do the bid on the property can get back into the arena and bid on the property, and maybe he can do the upset bid and get the property. But that was a fair way, I thought, to do it, is to open it back up to bids. So that's the reason I voted the way I did. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening. Drive safe home.
Same move.